We're going to open the August 5th Board of Selectments meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have an appointment at 7:05. But why don't we approve minutes from July 9th, July 23rd, and July 29th?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Is there any comments, questions, edits?
No, read through them, they look fine.
I just saw a typo, that's about it.
I caught a bunch of them, but it's not a circle, whatever.
Okay.
Or it just...
I did.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Correcting the typo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Four looks like a quick hit.
Want to go down to four? Is that all right with you?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Letter of support of the Town of Clinton Mass Works grant application.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to provide any background on that?
That will be scanned and sent to Clinton tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see.
Seven.
Okay. We have a letter of thanks to Sylvia Marble and her niece Judith Kerr for funding the Mabel Felton Marble Memorial Scholarship together. If I can find it. There it is.
How's Mary's system working?
Yeah. Since we're skipping around. Do I hear a motion to approve, or would you like me to read it?
Motion to approve. Seconded, but maybe give a summary to the folks in the audience.
Denise has graciously wants to donate additional money to the scholarship, and we've made that happen. So we have a motion and a second to approve. I mean, yeah, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh. Oh, one for each.
Excuse me, through the chair, we have a few people in the audience regarding item two, and that's just the authorization for the town administrator to proceed with negotiations on a host community agreement. Would you like to do that before you get into appointments?
Okay, that's fine.
Authorization for the town administrator to negotiate a host community agreement regarding the River Road West site, former Worcester Sand and Gravel Pit.
I would invite a designee from the board as well, too, to participate in the negotiations.
I would volunteer to do that. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, I'm good.
You okay? All right. Do you want to vote, or just agreement?
Why don't you, I would recommend voting because you're authorizing me to do this.
No, I mean, for me to volunteer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that okay?
Designee's fine.
Okay, good. All right. So do I hear a motion to authorize the TA to negotiate?
So moved. Seconded.
Anything else to be said?
Thank you for doing it.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye. Did I hear an aye?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, aye.
All right, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
We'll be in touch?
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for seeing, doing it early.
Have a good one.
And we have an appointment for 7:05 for the one-day beer and wine service license and special event permit. Is, are you Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything you want to share with us, the audience, before we deliberate?
Only if you didn't get the summary of what it is. If you'd like me to summarize it, I certainly can do that.
I would, for the folks on camera, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, sure. It's just a real simple event, utilizing the back, we call it the grassy area on the backside of the mall, next to the movie theater, near one of our mall entrances, and, you know, we're going to do, we're hoping to do a, what we're calling a quote-unquote "beer garden" with a brewer that we're looking to hopefully maybe do some future business with, so this is sort of a, you know, sort of a trial type of thing with him, but he's going to serve some of his wares, I think he said maybe four to six different brews. He couldn't be here tonight because of a previous appointment, but, so we'll have him set up. And then we've just, we've sort of built on that. We've got two of our food tenants, TJ Fridays and Regina Pizza, committed to doing the event, so they'll have, you know, they'll set up a table down there and be able to sell. We'll have a music portion, which, right now, we're looking at probably being just like a little acoustic duo, or at the very least, like a DJ, just having some music in there. And for the family aspect, we'll have like a bounce house. So the parents will come to bring their kids, and we'll have that whole area. It'll just be, I think it's a four-hour event, I think is what we said. And really just something to drive traffic to the mall, obviously, help out some of our tenants, and maybe build a relationship with future tenants.
And this is going to be on Saturday, August 24th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Comments?
Through the chair.
Yep.
I understand that you've gotten the approvals from our public safety officials and from our building commissioner as well. So I would just, I would just mention that the event is subject to inspection by the public safety officials and by the building commissioner, so just something to be aware of.
Thank you.
Now, are the food establishments actually preparing food outside, or are they selling already prepared food?
Yeah, they're going to, Regina Pizza will make his pizzas upstairs, bring them down, he'll sell them, he'll swap them out as they cool down.
Okay.
And TJ Fridays, we've already tested their mobile ordering system, so they'll have a limited menu. You won't be able to order anything off the menu, it'll be sort of, you know, quick stuff, but you better order at the table, and then they'll have runners that will go up, pick it up, bring it down to you, so it'll be...
Oh, boy.
It'll be fresh food, but a limited menu for TJ Fridays.
Served outside, okay, because the food service might be subject to health inspections as well, as you know.
I understand.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the service license and special event permit?
So moved.
Seconded.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Can you just make a condition on payment of the fee?
Okay.
And receipt of the certificate of liability, which it's common that we get it after it's granted, they don't usually bother to procure it until after it's granted.
Okay.
At least be subject to those two things.
Yes. So the liquor liability certificate? And the fee, the permit fee? Is that okay with you?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Hope for good weather.
Yes.
Time for three. Do we want to do the street opening permits? Proof of ever-source requests for 65 River Road? And then delegate a future approvals of street opening permits to the highway superintendent or his or her designee?
And they've already approved the ever-source one?
They, I believe they all have...
Yes.
Approved that.
They have?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. Anything else to be said?
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Maybe we do him right now. How about you, come on up here?
I guess so.
I'm looking for you in your, in your uniform, and...
There you go.
And I couldn't find you.
See, came in camouflage, like a normal person.
Yeah.
Well, not that normal, but I tried, all right.
Got nothing.
All right, so I got a couple of months for you. Did you get those? If not...
Nope. Here's the paper clip on the right, if you want one.
I got... I got stacks.
All right, we got stacks. Does Margaret need one?
There you go.
I don't know where Margaret wants one.
So June and July for you.
Okay, smart. That's when I'm not sure she has one.
Everything kind of ties in together, so we can kind of go through it almost as one of the two months.
Okay.
But with June, we've still been working on our grant reimbursement, on that $20,000 grant we had through the federal government, the electronic fingerprint capture system, and then I'm happy to say that we got our money in July, finally. You know, sometimes with these federal grants, reimbursement takes a while, but it actually finally happened. So through June and July, we also worked to replace Officer Rogers, who left to go to West Boylston. So happily, as we had a meeting here not too long ago, we had that done in July, and he actually started work yesterday.
Nice.
Great.
Excellent. It's good to see. Unfortunately, with the vacancies, with, I guess, it's good for our economy, all our part-timers have other jobs and are working, but they're, unfortunately, they're busy, so his vacancy led to some additional overtime, so getting a body in place is going to be very important to start to quell that. You know, our overtime numbers were much higher than they've been over the last five years, so getting back to normal operations is going to be very, very helpful. So, but through, through June, June was kind of a typical month in terms of calls, we had about 600 calls. Usually the summer months are a little bit slower. You know, gave with criminal charges, three arrests, nine motor vehicle crashes, but I think, you know, that's not a significant number, but what was significant was the location, kind of getting back to that Gates Bondamalborough Road location, which we've done some mitigation in the past. So we're going to have to continue to look at that and see what happens as we move forward through the summer and into the fall. Also, the, you know, the motor vehicle stops and citations have been pretty steady along those lines through June, but actually we had an increase in motor vehicle activity. We've had some residents call and suggest some locations. We've been working very diligently in the Gardaville area right now to try and do some more enforcement. It's that tough area, you get past the library to Highland Street, where it's 25 and 20 miles an hour, depending on the direction, so we have some young families in that area now, so we're trying to do some more enforcement to kind of slow traffic down. It's just, it's a tough spot. People come down that hill off Highland Street, and they're, you know, they're moving, and they're not moving that fast, they're not doing 50, 60 miles an hour, but even 35 coming through that stretch, it's, you know, it's the only really area of town where we have a really tight congested homes, and, you know, people don't have a lot of, you know, front yard space, and it, you know, definitely seems a lot faster.
And poles that are right there in the road.
Right there in the road. It's just a difficult area.
Yeah.
So June was a busy month with the school. We had field day, so I give Officer Goulding a lot of credit. We moved field day, or, you know, the school moved field day because of bad weather, and it turned out to be a pretty good day, they moved it to a day that was raining. And so we traditionally do kickball with the kids, so Officer Goulding modified the rules to avoid some puddles and slip hazards and some other things. So he did a real good job. You know, he did a lot with the school over the month of June. We also had our fifth grade recognition, where we give dare awards and dare certificates for graduation. And it kind of culminates with us also, the union buys tickets for the kids, and we take the fifth graders to George's Island. So it's, it's been a great trip. We get a bunch of officers to spend the day out in the harbor with the kids. So it was really a nice June, kind of an end to June at the end of the school year. Into July, July was interesting. We had 832 calls, and that's unusual. If you've listened to the radio at all lately, we've definitely seen a spike in things. You know, not necessarily things that are leading to people being arrested, but just in, in overall calls for service, August, you'll see, what's that report? We're only five days in, and it's crazy so far. You know, one thing that I thought was really significant is that we, you know, we went to 19 medical calls, and we go to almost all medical calls, generally because we're the ones on the street, we're there first. We went to 19 medical calls in June, 37 in July, and we've already been to 12 this month.
Really?
And that doesn't include motor vehicle crashes with injury, so that's...
Is that the heat?
I think some of it could have been attributed to the heat, but it's just been, it's been odd things, too. I mean, you know, I'd get into it next month, but we had a heroin overdose over the weekend, so it really is just, just something, again, we're going to have to keep an eye on. You know, the heat can definitely be a contributing factor, especially with our older population. So we'll just have to see. And then unfortunately, we had a break-in at the golf station, and I'm not going to get into the particulars of the MO, but it was a little bit unique, something I've never seen in my entire career. It allowed the perpetrators to get in and out of the building several times, and they stole over $30,000 in merchandise in a very short period of time.
Hmm.
So it's something that Detective Trungon is working on with neighboring communities. There's kind of been a spike in business break-ins in the area, but this one was a little bit different, and I said, you know, in over 20 years, it was something that I had never seen on a method for entry, and we'll have to see what, what kind of comes of it.
Hmm.
Just interesting.
Were there any patterns to these trends?
In, which, in the break-ins or in the other things?
Yeah, in quantity.
Not really. We have had, you know, especially as we've transitioned into August, some unique calls. You know, we did some things this past weekend that, some other things I've never experienced in my career, so it's just, it just seems to be a spike in some things, and hopefully it's, you know, it's just part of what it is right now, and we'll, you know, we'll just keep an eye on it. You know, motor vehicle crashes and the things along those lines and that we deal with, you know, there's no, no spikes or trends in those that have been a problem yet, but it's been other things. And a lot of things, at times, when you involve people, the heat can be a huge factor. And people being uncomfortable, then they're not, you know, necessarily the most cordial with each other. But, you know, we're going to, again, going to keep an eye on, like I said, I don't want to spoil all of August by, you know, giving you all the report that what we've had in five days, but...
Are you offering a discount maybe?
It's just, it's just been, August has been, you know, one weekend, and it's already been an extremely interesting time, so...
Is there, are you still getting information about the traffic study? Anything like that?
So basically, I haven't got any updates from Mass DOT. They are working through, now, I think now that the budget is there, they can find out what they're going to have available for funding, and then they'll be able to choose what option they're going to look at for, for, you know, rectifying some of the 290 issues we have, and then once that's done, is when we're going to really be able to look at what the effect is here in town. You know, they've identified a major issue at the state level, so knowing that they're going to do something to mitigate that, it doesn't make sense to do a study now here internally. We're going to wait and look at that. That's not to say we're not doing some studies, because CMRPC has been doing some counts, I'm sure people have noticed some of the tubes that you drive over throughout town, so they'll have some information for us and some of the traffic patterns, and we'll continue to work on that.
Okay.
So then we move on to the draft of the ACO job description. There were a few changes that were made, and I apologize, I didn't bring a marked-up version, but just some clarification on the reporting, and I know there were also some concerns on, you know, how some of this was going to get done, and this is more of what. I've been working through a policy to define the how. I thought I was going to have it done, but based on what this weekend, I didn't really get to get as much done as I thought I would. So, you know, I think this clarified some of the issues that had been highlighted in the draft before, and I hope it's something that the Personnel Committee will be able to look at this week. My plan is to also be there to see them, and then we can move forward, and they'll have a policy that I'll run through with Margaret, and then we come up the board, take a look at that as well, but that'll define how the job will get done after we know, you know, define what the job is.
Questions?
I have two things for you. The building on Linden at the tracks?
Yes.
Being addressed...
The graffiti and...
Yes.
We had some discussions about some investigative things we're going to do on that. Trying to get it cleaned up is difficult because it's state property.
I noticed on my way down that somebody had painted it red.
Painted, yeah, painted over some of the things.
So it's painted over.
But that's also, if anyone noticed, if we have other graffiti in town, we can work with the, with the jail, with the Worcester County House, and they have a trailer that comes out, and they, they'll blast the graffiti off. So I'll reach out to them, and even though it's a state building where it's kind of an eyesore from the road, I'm sure the state's not going to care if we clean it up.
Correctors, the rocks over by the aqueduct are covered.
Yeah, that's kind of been there forever, and it's not an easy site to get to.
Except with the sprinkled...
We ran the horses back there, that's why.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's been some newer, I guess, fresh paint, so there's been some brighter colors, a lot of it has been faded for a while. That's a tough spot, so. There's some beautiful stuff, you know, it's actually, I would actually consider it artwork when you get under 495 off the tracks near the commuter lot, way in the back there, you know, one can see it, but it's actually, you know, some of that graffiti is truly artwork, but what's on that building is far from it.
Correct. And the other question that I had, brought up to me by a person in town, so you're coming up Crosby, you know where it hooks onto Pleasant?
Yes.
Right in front of Tim Wheeler's house?
Mm-hmm.
And there's a pole, right in the middle of the road.
Yes.
So the question has been posed, A, do you go around the pole to go left? When you're coming down Pleasant, do you go around the pole to get on Crosby, and will there be a sign for, no, we don't want big trail of trucks on it, because you're going to get stuck when you try to hook on the stump?
So that's, that sign's already there.
The no-truck sign?
The no-truck sign. So I think that leads into a greater conversation that we need to have, and something Dave Smith and I have been talking about, I think we need to talk about, is kind of our policy on that, our policy on signage, how that we adopt new signs in the way that we go about it, because we could, we absolutely could use some pavement markings there, and whether we delineate that as a traffic island, and you stay right, stay left. You know, it's never been an issue over the years, but as we've seen and as we've discussed, traffic is getting worse.
Correct.
There's a lot of people that are unfamiliar with the area coming, and that's what is going to create the problems. So I think that's a further discussion, something I'll talk to Dave about, and then as we come back, and we talk about what our policy is going to be to install new signs, to, you know, update and add and replace signs. Because I believe as part of the mitigation agreement for River Bridge, the intersection in front of the post office is also supposed to be taken care of, and I think that all, that whole area kind of will tie in with that. I have an idea that I've said to some people, and I won't get into it today, on one way we could work on that, and that would heavily involve that intersection at Crosby and Pleasant, so that's something that we would need to look at as we move forward.
Okay. Yeah, because I told the person I go around the pole, and I was promptly, promptly yelled at that, no, you don't go around the pole to go left.
And I always go around the pole.
You go...
I always go around the pole.
Yeah.
To me, it's just keep right.
I said, I'll ask.
Yeah, and we can, either through signage, and that's, that's a simple sign to put up and could eliminate a potential problem.
Can make it one way.
There's some other things.
Okay, cool.
There's some discussions that need to be had for that area.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Margaret? Good.
Question from the audience?
So, left hand didn't talk to the right hand. I introduced the sheriff's office to Dave Smith and DCR. We went out to the rock wall a couple weeks ago. It was concluded that, did you hear about this?
No, I haven't yet.
Anyway, and we concluded, well, they concluded, or the sheriff's office concluded, they can't get their truck out there, given the rock piles probably will puncture the wheels, but even if they could, they can't reach high enough, so what's the point of doing the lower half? So the rock wall's out, but Dave Smith, the sheriff's office, the captain who came out...
Yeah.
Did you know Steve... ...sell volaros?
I don't.
Anyway, I'll connect you with that if you want, is going to do, I think, the building you were referring to.
Okay, good.
There, and DCR has been connected, so DCR, DPW, and the sheriff's office are all connected, so when you walk out, I'll give you a little info.
Awesome. Appreciate you taking care of that, that's just rude, what was on the building.
Because I saw Walter's post. I know the sheriff, I contacted the sheriff and asked him how to make that connection. He made the connection for me. I introduced him to Dave, or not the sheriff, but his office to Dave, and that's how that all happened.
Cool.
After I saw Walter's post. But sadly, the art of the wall will have to stay.
If I had to pick one, I'd do the building, because more people see it whizzing down Linden Street.
I think the building's a fait accompli.
Yeah.
So I'll walk out with you.
Okay. So, one more question.
Yes.
One of the things that was changed in the ACO job description was, it was taken out, was removal and disposal of the animal remains from public waste.
Yeah, that's, Highway does that already.
Okay.
And that's really is what they...
But do they do the dogs and the cats, too, or...
They, so dogs and cats, no, Helen handle, or they'll do cats, but dogs, Helen handles cats, I mean, dogs. But wild animals are handled, by the way.
Okay.
Just because we were trying to reconnect owners, especially on dogs, a lot of times we don't see the cats, but Helen will handle cats, or the Highway will handle cats.
Okay. That was my question.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. All righty. We're doing that almost right on time.
Right. Do we want to do the interview now?
Chief Clark is here, if you're ready to do the interview.
All right.
Let me see him out there.
Okay. Are we ready to do the interview, girls?
Mm-hmm. So how are we handling the questions? Because I know that they're all intermingled.
Yeah. You want to just go around the table and ask, or you want to ask your own?
I'd rather ask you.
I don't know whose is whose. I know which ones are mine.
Mine is the first one and the last one.
Okay.
And I've got two and four. So you must be three and five?
Mm-hmm.
Hello, Chief Clark.
Hi.
How are you?
Come in, come on down.
Right here. Are you Mrs. Clark?
I am.
Hi, hi. Nice to meet you. Spoke on the phone, how are you?
Nice to speak to you.
We've met, but it's good to see you again. We've met, but it's good to see you again.
Lisa.
Hi, Chief.
Nice to see you.
Well, I don't know if you want to take just a minute to tell us about yourself, the others that haven't met you, or if there's anything you want to share in particular?
No, my name's Ken Clark. I was born and raised in Hopkinton, and I range around where I study, and I noticed that when I grew up, Hopkins was in the same place that you are now, and learning the same lessons. So that's kind of like, interesting to see that, how things evolve. But I've been in Hopkins my whole life. My family came there in the 1880s. I spent 44 years with the fire department. Went in at 15 and a half as a probationary call firefighter, and kind of worked my way up through the ranks, and went as a career firefighter in November of 1978. Fire prevention, lieutenant, deputy, then the chief my last seven years. So it's like, I was very interested. I did a short, similar to what Margaret had talked about with the town of Upton, after I retired. I retired in January of '16, after 38 years and three months of career. And it kind of like, it sounded like, it's a great community from what I read about it, and what I know, and I said, it'd be a nice place to help out if I can in any way, you know? So I kind of look forward to the challenge.
Can everybody hear, chief? No?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm getting yeses and nos, so if you could just speak up a bit, please.
I'll speak up. I have my big boy voice.
Can you use your chief voice?
There you go.
All right. Well, Lisa, you have the first question.
What do you consider the most important elements of an ideal fire department culture?
I would say is that the people are nice to each other. You know, it's to be on everybody's Christmas card list, but you have a professional relationship that you develop, and it starts at the lowest guy, and goes to the chief, and it comes from the chief, and goes back down to the lowest guy. So everyone has input into culture. Culture's so important in the fire department. And I went through some very, very high spots in culture, and then we changed a little bit in the middle there, and went, got into some low stuff, but we came back to the high. I think leadership has a lot to do with it. Once it's established to keep it there, you get the right people in charge, and it keeps the culture. But the culture does change. Times change, culture changes. I think our biggest challenge was we went from the BLS EMS to the ALS and brought in medics. Different people, great people, just a different, it just changed the culture. So a little bit, you know, I mean, it was positive, but it was like, we had to stay on top of that as the deputy, I was the deputy at the time, and with the chief, to monitor that. But it was different, changed it some, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Peg?
No, you can go, so we'll just run down. I'll circle back in on mine.
I'm talking loud enough, can you hear me?
So just do yours, and then I'll come back up, so we go in order.
Oh, all right. Okay. Given your lengthy experience as a fire chief, and your understanding of a town's financial constraints, what are some of the department's account lines within both wages and expenses that you would look to, to assure funds are being spent responsibly and in accordance with the fiscal year appropriations?
Well, I think you got to look at what the end number is, and then I have to, it would have to be the new guy coming in from the outside. And I had some brief conversations with Jim Concannon. Did I say the last name?
Yes, you did.
And you kind of like, got to like, look at it, see where it's being spent, how it's being spent. In my experience, is that efficient, or is there, maybe I can make a recommendation to, is a better way to do it, but change nothing at first, let it, see how it flows, learn it, see what's positive about it, what's negative about it. And then if there's a positive adjustment that can be made, is to, is to look at that with the expenses of personnel. The personnel was always pretty, other than the overtime, was pretty much the same every week, where I came from, you know what I mean? Everyone got a certain amount of money every week. And just had to monitor the overtime and on a weekly basis.
So, if we offer, and you accept, we will ask you to do an analysis of the department. What are the three areas you plan to focus on, and what tools are you going to use to gather and analyze the information?
Well, I really don't know specifically which areas to analyze right now, because I haven't got to see any of them. They're all, it's like, what I did review is MRI report, and I could see some weaknesses, but also some of the loain fruit seemed to be already done there on that, that they had mentioned. So I thought that was positive for the community and the fire department. I think you got to go in and pay attention, sit with the guys. Fire prevention is critical to me. I was in it for like 16 years. Operations is what you, it's what you do for the community. And I always told my guys, we're the place where the phone rings, and if people ask, they've probably tried three other places to get an answer. We need to answer the question for them. Yeah. If we don't know it, tell them, we don't know the answer, but we'll get right back to you. So it's like, that's my experience, is it's very community oriented, and it's like, and but specifically, when you talk about what three areas would you work on, you probably could break it down into, there's probably budgets, there's probably operations, and then there's fire prevention. To me, like I said, is important. So those three areas, it's kind of like, it would be the part of the three firsts that I would kind of like, look at, to say, hey, where are we at? Where do we need to go? And it's like, it seemed like it's a little bit of a challenge with the manpower and people available to respond to calls, and some of the brief conversations I've had, and also with the MRI report, but I got to like, see that firsthand and make my own opinion on it.
Okay. Lisa?
What positive impact do you feel you could have on the Berlin department in the interim position?
Well, I think all the things that they're working through, I lived through and worked through in the community where I came from. Like I said, when I grew up in Hopkins, it was 5,000 people, and it was like, and the department grew, we had a lot of building, and I think, it sounds like, again, in some of the early conversations, that the fire prevention is busy with a lot of new construction. I mean, so like I said, it was 16 years there, and then assisted after that when needed, because there was only one person at the time doing it. So it's like, I think you just kind of like, sit and learn and make recommendations.
Okay. You good? Please explain your experience working with the contracted ambulance billing company, and describe how you assured the consistent, timely submission of your department's service records to the billing company, and thorough, effective billing to the company, effective billing by the company.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I think our demographics was critical to the billing. We use Coastal Medical, I think they're on Sutton or something like that. The demographics that I dealt with Hopkins, the return was like 86, 88 percent, which is really high, when you go next door to Milford, it's like, because of the demographics, it's lower. Okay? And there was my men was worth their weight in gold, and that's what her Tuesday job was, was the EMS runs, and they would do anywheres from eight to 12 a day on the EMS runs, and every Tuesday she had those bills, and if she had a question, they went, she went to me, if I didn't know it, not being a paramedic, we would go to one of the EMS coordinator and ask a question, and every Tuesday she sent those electronically to over Coastal, and the return was very high. And that was an integral part of the budget at the time, it was almost, the money went into the general fund, but the general fund and the town manager allowed us to use just shy of half a million dollars of it for manpower and EMS related. Paid for all the, if you needed a Band-Aid, you bought it for that. So it was like, it worked out really well, it was a positive. The guys are really good on their paperwork, you got to kind of make sure that from the ground up, operationally, that the people are filling out the proper paperwork in the proper way that they want it, so they can maximize the financial gain on the other end over Coastal. And we got in early with them, and it was, it wasn't a percentage type thing per run or per incident response. It was a flat fee, and it was really low. I think we were one of the first seven or eight towns to get in with them really early. And they never changed. It worked out good for Hopkins anyways, so.
Okay. There was a second part, how did you monitor this activity, but you sort of answered that.
Yeah, that was actually, that was very critical to us being able to have the staffing that we do. And so I monitored that, that, I got a, had an Excel spreadsheet that I kept up every month, and when it came in, I knew how much was there, so that we would meet, if we were going to be short, I would go to the town hall and say, hey, we're not going to meet that, because the income is lower than anticipated. But some months it ran low, and then the next month it would be high. So it kind of balanced out in the end, but had to keep your eye on it. I did it whenever they sent it, which is a monthly basis, so I'd update the Excel spreadsheet, and I live with Excel. So it's like, that's what made me, made my job a lot easier.
Chris, can I just ask a follow-up?
Sure.
So you were, you were hands-on, you were involved in that entire process, where the personnel were doing their reports and submitting them, and you were able to update the spreadsheet?
Well, you delegated it to, there was a delegation, there was a chain of command, so the lieutenants made sure that the guys sold out.
I see.
There was a duty group lieutenant for each group of five guys.
Okay.
So it was like, they, at my time, now there's even more than that, but there was, he was, if there was a breakdown, or one of the reports wasn't filled out, it went from me, the men to me, to lieutenant, to the...
I see.
Back to the firefighter to make sure it was done correctly.
Okay, great.
So the chain of command was followed, and it was like, no, I didn't get to speak to the guys directly unless, it was a brief question or something like that, and went through lieutenant.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Morale. When it's great, the department works really well together. And when it's not there, it is absolutely demoralizing. Tell us what steps you'd take to find out which side of the morale fence the department is on, and if there's an issue, what are your plans to address and correct it?
Sometimes you can tell by walking in the door. Been around firehouses long enough, and that you can, I don't want to say it's a bad smell or a good smell, but you can smell it going through the door. Again, it goes back to your culture question that you had at the beginning. Morale is, everyone has got to be, I feel, most firefighters are self-driven, and need to be, and want to be led, so if you have a good culture, if you have a good work atmosphere, everyone is treated the same, you don't have any, you can't have any favorites, and say, oh, yeah, you get to do it this way, and everyone else gets to do it that way. Can't do business like that, you know what I mean? And that's why they put you in a corner office to make that decision, and it's like, and sometimes it's, I even had the, sometimes over the vantage of a disadvantage, but I had two brothers that worked in the firehouse. So it was like a family thing, and it was like, if anything, they were more what's expected of them. So it was like, I had to be on my toes and make sure there was no favoritism shown there, but it's like, morale's critical. It's the highest after a fire or a really serious incident. Everyone is, they get that, I think they're all, maybe a little bit of a drum and junkies to start with, you know what I mean? So it's really high for a while, for, after a major incident where things go really well. And it's just kind of like, you got to, you got to feed it, feed the positive constantly, every day. If the guys do a good job, tell them they did a good job, you know what I mean? If something, they do something really good, they should be here, sitting on one of these chairs in heaven, you guys, say thank you to them for something spectacular, you know what I mean? But that's, but I'm the last one to be able to say that. So it's like, I was never one to do that, but it's important for the guys. They get, need to be recognized and take care of them. I have good equipment, which I see on the floor down there, between the turnout gear and the rolling stock that you got, you seem to be in good shape with that. And again, only being down there 20 minutes, I still have a lot to learn here, so.
And when it's bad?
When it's bad, it's, it can be a very challenge to get it, to go back to positive. Again, I lived through that as a new lieutenant with some people who were very, it's my way of the highway type stuff, and had never done anything. But they, for some reason, the leadership of people seems to get, oh, I'm going to follow them, you know what I mean? I never understood that, but it's like, you just have to spend time with it every single day. Every time you see them, you got to do something positive with them, you know what I mean? And it's like, and bring them, I always called it the dark side, you know what I mean? Bring them away from the dark side, and bring them into the light, and show them, so what we want to do, the community is their number one reason why we're here. Not me, not you, they can't, and that's why we're here. So it's like, it's a challenge some days, yeah, right? I had mine. So it's like...
Okay. All right. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much for answering the questions, and we'll set as far as any follow-ups or anything. All right.
Cool.
All right.
Awesome.
We also have on here to take a vote on our agenda, so I guess I would look for feedback, comments, motion?
Motion to hire.
Motion to hire.
Okay.
Pending negotiations, right?
Pending negotiations, yes. Seconded formally.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Margaret.
So we have a couple of things left on our agenda. Are we meeting with Ken afterwards, too?
You'll be, you'll be voting to enter into executive session to meet with the chief.
Okay. All right. All right. We'll see you.
We'll see you back in a bit.
Well, you could always stay and watch, too, you know?
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we have number five, job descriptions, review and approvals.
All right, so I've provided the board three different job descriptions for permanent positions that are in transition, or where vacancies exist, and that we're going to be advertising for, and have already advertised for. First is the fire EMS chief. I know the board and Personnel Committee have both seen former iterations of this job description. I had a couple of suggested, what I would consider minor changes to the draft that was approved by the Personnel Committee in June, and I know it was reviewed by the Board of, the Board of Selectmen at that same time, although there's no note that the board actually approved it. This was when the advertisement went out.
Okay.
So the minor revisions I have to this, this version, is to add, under basic function, add the fire EMS chief as an FLSA exempt position.
Mm-hmm.
And qualifications and skills. There had been discussion, quite a bit of discussion, I think, before I started about requirement to live within a certain distance from work or a certain time from work. After speaking with Acting Chief Concannon, he suggested that we might be able to broaden the pool of candidates if we use time rather than distance for an incoming chief. So on, under the qualifications and skills, item two, I added, the fire EMS chief must reside within a blank, and I would leave this to the board, I have some thoughts on this, a blank-minute automobile commute from the Berlin town border. And this would be, it would be a regular automobile commute, obviously, you can't really predict traffic accidents, things like that, but we have to determine what is reasonable without, without causing obstruction to, you know, a larger pool of candidates, or obstructing a larger pool of candidates. My thought was, my thought was a 20 to 30-minute regular commute to work, but the board could certainly decide to recommend something, something different than that. And Personnel Committee is going to see this on Wednesday night, too, so they'll have, they may have thoughts on this as well.
Okay.
The, under item six, this is, we received feedback from Chief Flanagan in Boyleston after this last search. Mary reached out to him, and he gave, he gave some thoughts. He mentioned that it's very difficult to receive the chief fire officer credentialing from the Mass Fire Service Commission, or the EFO designation through the National Fire Academy. Those are extremely selective programs, and one out of several hundred tend to receive those credentials. So he offered some alternatives, which I outlined here. I added to those credentials, or must have, satisfactorily completed an equivalent combination of courses for fire officer one, two, three, incident safety officer, tactics and strategy for the company officer, leadership, command and control, and other courses that provide the required knowledge, skills, and abilities to perform the essential functions of the job. So it's giving alternatives to those credentials, which could also open a broader pool, open this up to a broader pool of candidates. And the only other things I added were to note revised dates on the job description.
Okay. Do you want to discuss this one first, or? All right. So I guess I have no problems with the additions. I don't know about the two of you.
No, and I'd probably go with the 30 minutes, just to give us some flexibility.
Okay. Peg?
Yeah, I was thinking 20, but 30 works.
All right. That works for me, too.
Okay.
So I think that was the only thing that needed a decision.
Yes, that's, I was leaving that to the board.
All right.
And we're doing this, correct? We're not going back out through anybody?
We're doing this, and I was going to include this in my TA updates, but I, since we're talking about the job description, if you don't mind, I'll give you an update. So Brian Duggan at MRI has offered at no charge to partner with us on the advertisement, resume screening, telephone interviews, and other guidance that we might need moving forward. So while we'll still be doing a big chunk of it, they are going to partner with us for no charge for some of these, some of these search process steps. There would be a cost, should we choose...
There would be a cost, should we choose, there'll be at least some cost if we choose to go with the assessment center. And I think my recommendation is always to do some sort of assessment center. So if we choose to do that, we can negotiate those terms when that time comes. But I was very relieved to hear that and gave me a sense of renewed optimism, I guess.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's great.
That's where we stand with that.
So that's the only financial burden that we'll have with MRI?
The assessment.
If we decide to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
What kind of fee is that? What sort of range of fee is that?
I, that would be kind of a menu item. I've done it before and I honestly cannot remember. It would be nowhere near the cost that the town paid for the entire process. I wish I could, I wish I could say, but I really can't tell you. But I would probably be $2,000 or less. I think somewhere in that ballpark as opposed to $12,000 or more.
Okay, all right. Do you want to move on to the treasure collector?
Are you going to bundle these for approvals at the end or?
We can, okay.
All right, so treasure collector, this was drafted, I wish I could say when it was drafted, I can't. I think it was January, January of 2019, treasure collector maybe? Somewhere in that. I don't have the date on this, on this copy. But again, I added a couple of, I added a couple of recommended changes to this. The first would be, again, FLA status. I did put salaried exempt, that could be subject to the board's discussion, but I do believe the position warrants exemption under FLSA because of the supervision and the, and the scope of duties the position has. Under general summary, because a town administrator now exists and it didn't before, I did strike reports to Board of Selectmen and the, when hired. And I put reports to the town administrator, but then further described under general summary, under general policy direction of the selectmen and the administrative oversight of the town administrator. So it does keep the board in the, in the loop. I added, a sentence in the middle of that paragraph, I added a couple of words, the other four major areas of responsibilities are payroll. I added the words, and benefits management. No other changes on that page. On, under essential job functions, you have copies in front of you, where it formerly said negotiates health insurance contracts in conjunction with the selectmen. It now reads negotiates health insurance contracts in conjunction with the town administrator with advice from the Insurance Advisory Committee and presents recommendations to selectmen for approval. Under other duties and responsibilities, on the, I added a third bullet, coordinates employee health insurance, working with the Insurance Advisory Committee, town administrator, and other local officials. And I added another bullet, oversees the processing of all employee payrolls and payment of invoices in accordance with the town's payroll and bill warrant schedules.
That sounds like what he does.
Right, I think it accurately reflects the duties. Under minimum, under recommended minimum qualifications, I changed this around a bit because I think there might have been a little duplication here. So on the, the first bullet is essentially eliminated except for the header, education and experience. The second bullet would read, position requires a bachelor's degree in finance or a related field and five years of progressively responsible work experience in municipal finance administration or the equivalent with at least two years in a supervisory or work leader capacity or any equivalent combination of education, training, and experience which provides the required knowledge, skills, and abilities to perform the essential functions of the job. I struck the next bullet because that's where it was repeated. And then the following bullet, I added a few words, incumbent must be certified or must become certified as a treasurer or collector or both, by the, they're individual certifications, actually, by the Massachusetts Municipal Treasurers and Collectors Association within one year from date of hire. And then finally, I just added a word on that last bullet, must be bondable as collector and as treasurer for at least the required amount set forth by the Department of Revenue. And fine, well, there's two more areas. Under skill, I added ability to understand how software systems post transactions. I added another bullet, skill with Excel and other Microsoft applications and the ability to create charts, graphs, and presentations. And finally, under physical requirements, I, I just, I changed what was there to, no, a couple more, to use his hands to finger, handle, feel, or operate objects, tools or controls, and reach with hands and arms as in picking up papers, files, and other, and other common office objects, occasionally lifts and or moves objects weighing up to 30 pounds. I'm sorry, I missed a word there. It should be use his hands to finger to handle, feel, or operate objects. And under motor skills, duties, duties require motor skills associated with operating office equipment, ability to read, speak, and hear, and that's it.
Okay.
Corrected one typo after that, but very small.
Okay, anybody questions, comments from the board?
I do, yeah. So I have two. Hours per week?
Hours per week, so this does not specify full-time. My strong recommendation is that the treasure collector be full-time whether it's 40 hours a week or some modified schedule. In looking at the appropriation for this year, and this is part of this packet, Berlin's hourly rate at 40 hours a week would be low, much lower than, than the other comps that are shown on the chart that I gave you. But there could be some sort of modified full-time schedule, at least at the start, say 37 hours a week, that would be able to pay the average 39.09 per hour. And that would work within the appropriation if it was 37 hours a week.
Do you see hours on Saturday?
I don't see regular hours on Saturday at all. There's no reason, I don't think, not unless there's some sort of special project that has to be done, because the treasure collector's office, like the administrator, like the select board, like the assessors, like the accountant, are focused on customer. So they should be, they should be open during, during business hours. So I wouldn't see Saturdays as a regular business day, no.
Okay, and then the other question that I had under the recommended minimum, blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
Minimum qualifications where it has, that they have to, they have to be certified within a year? What happens if they don't?
Then they're not meeting the terms of employment and I think that would have to be noted on a performance assessment and maybe given an extra three months, but that's going to be very difficult, given that these schools happen once a year. So hmm.
Have you ever had that happen?
Don't, if they don't, and this is not a contracted position. So if they don't, I haven't had that happen, so this would be new to me.
Most people want to keep their job.
Yeah, I think so. So failure to meet the requirements of the job description. Do we have something in Personnel Policies about this?
I haven't seen one.
Okay, so that's something I think we'd probably have to look at the Personnel Policies on, failure to meet requirements of job descriptions. But otherwise, the only recourse, I think the recourse would be.
I don't think I remember reading one of the, you do have to remember the Personnel Policies are very old.
Yeah.
And I do believe, I read one paragraph that it is so many warnings and termination.
Okay, so we probably follow the steps then in the Personnel Procedures Manual, which we're looking, we'd be looking at updating.
It really needs to be updated.
We'd be updating. Good question. It's a new one, I mean, I've worked with certified treasurers and collectors only.
Can I ask the personnel another question? So.
Do you want to come down to the front so you can hear?
No, 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 that's okay. You don't have to, unless you'd like to. So we, I remember talking about the salary of the treasure collector. And I believe there was an increase given in the last year. I think that the personnel, tell me if I'm wrong, agreed that it was low. But in trying to, instead of a big jump, was, was thinking they would increase it slowly? Does that sound?
I was not on personnel when they did the salary. But I do remember Claire explaining, just as they're talking, but I will absolutely bring it up with Claire and Tommy on Wednesday. But I was not on personnel when they were doing that.
Okay, okay, you're off the hook. And then, because previously, the treasurer and collector were separate.
Right.
And they were elected. So this was like the first year for treasure collector.
And we obviously have to work within the appropriation. So this was a way, actually, June and I were talking this morning and, and this was a way that we came, you know, came up with the possibility of being able to pay within appropriation upon hire and then maybe look at making it truly full-time in the next fiscal year over the, over the course of time or.
Because your suggestion was what, 37 hours?
No, my, my, to work within the appropriation, yes.
Right.
But to truly make it full-time, it would be 40 hours. So we'd have to account for that later, so, budget for it later.
Yes, you mean in the following year or?
In the following year or when, if we're able to go to a town meeting and pass the additional appropriation. But there'd have to be some sort of action to be able to do that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
We can, on this, there were more changes. So I'll be going to the Personnel Committee meeting on Wednesday night and we'll look for their feedback as well on, on how to advertise this.
Okay. I mean, other than that, that was the only comment I had. I really agree basically with everything you're proposing on that one.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And the final one is building commissioner. I recommend commissioner, given the fact that there are several inspectors in the department. And I think a town that is growing at this rate and has seen the complexity and development here requires someone with true commissioner credentials. So I did, I did recommend changing the title of this position to commissioner. And again, this one would, my recommendation would be that it be FLSA, salaried exempt. This would be full-time, 40 hours a week. It should be full-time, 40 hours a week. Under supervision, I didn't change anything in the first paragraph. I did recommend a couple of changes under supervision received where it would incorporate the town administrator's position, works under the general policy direction of the Board of Selectmen, and administrative oversight of the town administrator, all in accordance with applicable provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws and Town Bylaws. As you know, the commissioner's job is heavily governed by statute and building code. Supervision given, would supervise one clerical employee assigning tasks and instructions and conducting performance evaluations, supervises and coordinates work with the electrical, plumbing, and gas, oh, I'm sorry, electrical, plumbing, and gas, local and alternate inspectors. Job environment, I recommend adding a couple of words to the sentence that read attends regular evening meetings. I added when required. This person would also be, actually, I'll, I'll note this in a minute. Under essential functions, several paragraphs down, it would be named, change town coordinator to town administrator, spell out highway superintendent, and again, change coordinator to administrator. And in the next paragraph below that, make it clear that this position serves as the town's zoning enforcement officer. And two paragraphs later, monitors all expenditures for the department's budget. And those were the major changes I recommended to this job description. I had one other little addition near the end, the job description does not constitute an employment agreement and is subject to change by the employer as the needs of the employer and requirements of the job change. And so I added lines for amendments and approvals at the bottom. I'm going to be a stickler for adding those notes for dates approved and dates amended, so it makes it easier to track versions of documents. So that'll be added to most everything.
Okay.
So are there any questions on this?
Why do you always look at me when she asks the questions?
I just look left and right. Left and right. Peg?
I have three. So Margaret, is the title building commissioner purely based on just because they're supervising people or based on educational requirements?
This is based on credentials.
Okay.
Definitely, yes. A building inspector under the building code and statute is different than a building inspector. So under the building code, it could be called inspector of buildings or commissioner. They, they both have the same credentials, but it can't be called building inspector. Building inspector has lesser credentials.
Okay.
Buildings have to have.
A commissioner.
A person with the certification of commissioner.
Commissioner.
So also under education, training, and experience, will he or she be required to attend X amount of classes, meetings, et cetera, per year?
Yes, that's a very good point and yes, we need to add that. And that's going to have to be, ongoing training is absolutely required for this.
I think they have to to keep the certification.
Yes, to keep the certification.
And last question, was there anything in here about monthly reports to you and then up to us?
I didn't put anything in here. Where is that you'd like to see that?
I don't have a specific spot for it, but I know where other departments are reporting monthly updates to us that, where this one touches the entire town.
So we can say provides periodic reports, provides.
Monthly?
Yeah, or.
I think you have language like that somewhere else. Is it in the fire maybe?
I'll add that language.
You have the language in there.
Yeah, it was in something that I just read today, so.
Okay.
It must be in one of the others.
I'm not sure which one it was, but you had the perfect language for that. So if you don't recreate the veil.
All right, so I'll use the, the other job description that does contain it.
Good catch, Peg.
Hey, what a rule.
What else? Throw another one at me.
Be careful of what you ask for, there. This town administrator down the end of the table. Take my vegetables back.
I'm going home and cooking those vegetables. Okay.
Did you have another one?
Car.
There's nothing about a car here.
No car?
Okay, well, I'm just asking. I don't want it to come up later. I don't want it to be, to come into negotiations, so.
Would that be a contract negotiation?
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah.
As far as like mileage reimbursement? Because we'll have to do inspections.
I don't, I don't. This wouldn't typically be a contracted employee, so I guess that would be a subject for contract negotiations, but.
Or would it just be under the regular bylaws, a mileage log?
Mileage log, a use of town vehicle could be outside the job description. I wouldn't build vehicle into the job description though.
No. Are there any other questions? All right. Do we want to vote these as the package deal?
Pending changes, yeah.
Yeah, pending the changes that we've talked about.
Do we need to include the advertisements or?
Do you want to, do you want to go through the advertisements? There's only two here. I didn't include fire chief because we're gonna, I'll start with MRIs, not the ideal candidate profile, but an advertisement based on MRIs. The advertisements really just reflect what the job descriptions are. Dates though, I intend, if with the board's approval and the Personnel Committee's approval, I intend to get these advertised right away. Not to belabor the point, but we're, we've, the subject of screening committees has come up. And prior to the town administrator getting here, applications were sent in by individuals interested in participating on various boards and committees, and that's still applicable. But with screening committees, the board could authorize me to designate a screening committee and I do not have to do that. I wouldn't have to do that according to the open meeting law. open meeting law. That's something that I could put together. So it's, we've received a few applications for participation on the treasure collector screening committee, and I think that being a, first of all, I think being a professional position, we need to have people with some sort of financial expertise on an initial screening committee, so I would want to be sure to do that. So I need to, I need to ask the board, we can go ahead and advertise and do all that, but I think on August 19th, I'd like to come back to the board and ask how you'd like me to proceed with these screening committees. Because there does seem to be some interest.
Yes, I think we sort of advertised, or put the word out, or whatever you're gonna say.
Okay, all right. So I'll, I'd like to talk with the board about that on the 19th.
Okay.
I have one more question. Possess a valid Massachusetts driver license. I'm assuming that the police will do the background. Just because I show you I have a license doesn't mean it's valid.
Yes, and we'd also, yeah, and we'd also retain copies of any applicable licenses. So building certification, I, building commissioner certification, driver's licenses, and other credentials, we would have in the personnel file.
Okay. And will the, the check on the license, will that be done periodically? Because I can be a really good driver today and a really crappy driver in six weeks, and you're not going to know.
Yes, yes, that certainly can be, similar to, similar to quarry for certain positions. That can be done periodically. Which job description are you on, Pig?
The building commissioner.
Okay.
And about a physical as well? Do we require a physical?
The pre-employment physicals are required for everyone. That's part of the personnel policies and procedures.
I mean, so do we need to put in there that, well, I suppose there'll be more. When somebody sends their resume in and we write back and say, hey, want to come back? We'll say, please bring the following, you know, copies of...
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, those will be requested along with resumes. I think we'd be asking for all applicable certifications and credentials with the resumes. And I do know that the personnel policies and procedures have some of these requirements for quarry, for pre-employment medicals and things like that.
Okay, now I'm done.
Any questions on the ads?
Nope. We'll give a, fill in the blanks.
Yeah, we'll give a reasonable timeframe for a deadline to submit resumes and applications. These are both going to be posted for the minimum 10 days internally and externally. So we're probably looking at about, we're still early in August, maybe as soon as the end of August or the end of the first week in September. That might be reasonable.
Are you going to post with the salaries included in the advertisements?
So the salaries, typically we do, otherwise everybody's just calling to ask for the salaries anyway. So, yes, we would be putting a number plus, so we wouldn't be putting the full budget amount, we'd be putting a number plus depending on qualifications and education.
Okay. And do you need us to approve that number?
Well, let's see. The number four, treasurer-collector, this is, this is where it's going to be difficult. We'll have to be sure that we put the full-time hours, the 37 hours, for example. The collector-treasurer is the budget, and I forgot to bring my budget sheet. I know the budget is, I think it's 75,920 or something. Is it 75,920?
Exactly right.
Okay. So 75,920, so we would put 70-plus. For building commissioner was 90, 90 exactly?
I just found.
Sorry. I was just looking at it.
97,21.
So 85-plus?
Yeah.
And that's what we'll put for the advertised, advertised rates.
And these are all, these salaries are all in alignment with other communities around us, you know, not your really expensive communities that I won't name, but communities similar to our demographics and...
Building commissioner and fire chief are, treasurer-collector would not be based on 40 hours, but for 37, it would be.
So I'll ask again if we want to approve these as a bundle.
Question to approve. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up Personnel Committee, and then we move on advertising.
All right. Well, we'll move on to the board review of priorities and objectives. Boy, is that growing, huh?
It's a long list, and these are all for the board's review tonight. I know you've got a note Chief Clark is waiting to go into executive session, so I wanted to at least present these. This is a long list, I need to remember the pages. But I did, knowing that, in my first six months anyway, we should have some priorities and objectives established, and they're becoming increasingly clear, you know, with personnel and finance kind of on the front burner. But I did put a box around some of those that are time-sensitive, starting with established town administrator goals and objectives. But the need to create a personnel action form became quite evident at the start of this fiscal year, so that's something we're working on, and it should be done as soon as possible. Creating a certified payroll for use in the coming fiscal year, the code of conduct and ethics I've drafted, and you have a draft tonight. For employees, it's interesting, code of conduct for employees, there actually are, there's a long, a few pages of standards of conduct for employees. So we could certainly develop a code of conduct for employees that employees could sign off on, but it would be based, it would be based on what's in the personnel policy and procedures, and we could, we could add to that. Advertise and fill vacant or transitioning positions. It was noted to determine the applicability of personnel policies for strong chief, and I can tell you right now that my feeling is that personnel policy should absolutely be applicable to any and all department heads, strong chief, and any and all other department heads and employees. The CPA is coming up, and we are working on establishing a process for, administrative process for CPA implementation, review and update job descriptions, and update the class and comp plan. That's hopefully partly going to be through an HR grant. Engage consultant for employee benefits, I'll talk about that in my TA report at some Have an FY21 budget process kickoff meeting and begin coordinating budget procedures for FY21. Capital planning, work on the entire capital planning process, updating the plan, defining the process, defining duties of the capital planning committee and others. Execute, negotiate and execute solar pilot agreement with POTUS. And I think there's something outstanding, maybe outstanding on the Randall Road solar project, that, those have to be closed out. Letters to businesses on the plastic bag ban that is effective January 1st. Begin negotiating the recreational marijuana host community agreements, and there could be a number of those. Define the, define the position to take on OSHA safety officer. I think I'm going to actually call in Division of Labor Standards and Safety to meet with the departments to talk about the rules, so we can have a better idea of the role of the safety officer versus various department heads. Library septic system procurement is on the front burner. Establishing procurement policies and procedures on the front burner. Delineate between the senior tax work-off program, participation in town employment. That has to be done before the next senior tax work-off program round. So that's something that we need to, we need to take care of before. And then you have the rest of the long list of feedback, comments, prioritized items. But rather than, rather than get bogged down on this tonight, if the board could review all of these, and maybe we could discuss it at your next meeting, we could really decide on which items should rise to the top.
Okay. Why don't we each take a look at this between now and the next meeting, and we can, like, pick your top five or whatever?
There were, I don't know how many, how many are here, do you think?
Three pages worth.
I should have numbered them.
Margaret, on a, just a quick question on the adopted code of conduct and ethics? So that's whether they're elected people, volunteer people, doesn't matter, it's if you touch it, you're on it.
Right. It's all about, it's all about, it's basically a code of civility. It's about, it's about being the face of the town and showing that this community encourages respect, respectful dialogue, and respectful interactions, and it's about setting an example. So it would apply to all elected, all appointed boards and committees, everyone. And I know that there are boards and committees that operate outside of the board's jurisdiction, and so this elected ones at that, it can't be mandated for them, but I am more than willing to visit the various boards and committees and talk about the code and talk about it serving as an example for all boards and committees, so.
I think it's a great idea. All right. It was a lot of reading when we got these today.
Long list. This was, this was, this was a multi-day project, just filling in the, filling in the feedback. But see, the feedback is, it was, I found it really useful. And it, and it did, it did point to some areas that several different people from different, you know, from different areas, areas thought were priority, which, which helped a lot, too.
Do you want to talk about the organizational chart, or do you want to just wait?
I'll give it to you for review. We can wait till August 19th. It's a draft, it's very much draft that still has to be run by departments.
Yeah, I just have a quick, instead of building inspector, it's building commissioner.
I, I used what was existing at this moment. I didn't want to jump the gun, but I can, I certainly can change that. I also used the class and comp plan to identify the positions where they rank, and that may or may not be what's reality at the moment.
Well, I did see, one was, one thing that's missing is the building inspector or building commissioner's clerk.
Yes, that's missing. You're absolutely right. I have to fill in.
And the public safety administrative, administrative assistant, is that only police or is that fire and police?
So it's interesting, because it appears in two different places on the class and comp plan, once as a fire administrative assistant and once as a public safety administrative assistant. So I'll need clarification on that as well.
That was the only two things I noticed, but, yeah.
And she just, she got a salary bump because it was woefully inadequate.
Okay, so it's, the description is, actually covers both. So I think that we'd probably then remove the fire one, if the other position does both.
They're on either side of the page, you can't really put her between.
Leann, if you're watching, I did not mean to miss you.
No, no, this would be Sharon.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, under building inspector, I meant, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Just a little feedback. I'm sure the departments would have let you know, too.
Okay, so, yeah, we're having our first department, department heads meeting next week, and I'll be circulating this before then to get some feedback.
Good.
All right.
Same thing with communications protocol. If you just want to take a look at that, this would be standard, regular communications, but I've also noted in here with the red arrows how emergency communications might flow, and that would involve Neshoba Valley, so I'll have to talk with Neshoba Valley to make sure that, that matters, that emergencies, when, when an emergency is in progress and the town should know, should be informed about it, that the information would flow from the incident commander all the way through dispatch, and then, then ultimately to the board. Because the last thing the incident commander is going to want to do is pick up the cell phone and say, yeah, we're in the middle of this emergency, and by the way, please pass this along to the board, so.
Okay. All right. You want to go over your, your town administrator report?
It's the code of conduct, also, that's also on here. Are we doing that tonight, or are we waiting on that one also?
We can wait on that. If, if the board would like to just review that, we'll put everything on for the 19th, and we can deal with markups and changes and everything then.
Okay.
I just, I have a written report to the select board, which, you know, I could actually post these things on my webpage if I, if I knew how to use my webpage, I could do. I'm sorry to say. Oh, yes, that's on the priorities and objectives list.
That's right. We'll put that at the top of that list.
So...
You want to just do some highlights or something?
I think I will. Let's see, what I haven't, okay, one of the big things, we've been through a lot of this, but one of the big things this week is, the town had been talking with benefits consultants, and I had a chance to kind of get in on the, on interviews with Dennis and two of the finalists this week. Unfortunately, there are a number of things that are happening at the moment that made me not entirely comfortable with the process and want to step back to review not only the specs in the RFP, but there was, there's an understanding now, I mean, it's just a realization that FY21 is right around the corner, and changes to the, the employee benefits plan and any plan design changes aren't going to happen miraculously within the next couple of months. And I really haven't had an opportunity to talk with the, you know, the full cadre of benefits consultants that are out there that work for municipalities. It would make me a lot more comfortable to kind of redo the specs of the RFP, reissue it, and talk to a broader group of consultants, so we know that we're comparing apples to apples and spending the town's money wisely. So I am, I plan on notifying the finalists that we will terminate this procurement, and we will start a new, in the best interest of the town, we'd be terminating this procurement, and we'd be starting a new procurement where those finalists and others can all submit proposals. I just think that's the more advisable course at this point. We have requested, I think we're requesting three reserve fund transfers for finance this week. One for ACO wages for the first half of FY21, one for building inspections, or two building inspections, part-time wages, and one for COA director wages. I've, I've gotten access to the town's accounting system, VEDAR, read-only access, so it's going to help greatly in budget preparation and looking periodically at real-time revenues and expenditure, revenues and expenditures. Counsel on aging van, I did report this to the board already, but Representative Naughton has spoken with WRTA Executive Director regarding the town's desire to control or be able, and/or be able to take the van as needed into Middlesex County, over county lines. In Representative Naughton's words, the WRTA Executive Director is cool with that. He says he's cool with that. And he, so we're going, we're just waiting now to hear if the funding for the van has been approved in the budget. And Representative Naughton did express an interest in having a broader discussion about regional transportation in the fall, so I'm looking forward to that. I met with Janet Pierce and Trish Settles of CMRPC, and as always, they're just loaded with all kinds of opportunities, grant funding and technical assistance and regionalization opportunities for the town, so I look forward to participating in that. One of the first will be proceeding with an ADA self-assessment grant funded by the Mass Department on Disability. And those are, Recreation Committee, the trash pickup update, I have sent an email to the Chair of the Recreation Committee asking that they please reconsider their early... reconsider their earlier vote and fund trash pickup from the Recreation Revolving Fund in FY20, and I did give them assurances that I am going to be participating in the budget process in FY21, and we'll do everything in our power to make sure all the committees' budgetary needs, as well as other departments' budgetary needs, are met to maintain level services. I haven't heard anything back on that yet, and I think those are the biggies.
Okay, okay. Let us know when you get it up on that website.
Someone help me.
Tom Galvin would probably be the best.
Okay, Tom Galvin can help me.
Okay, no problem.
If you're really in trouble, I can have Tim also knows how to do it.
Maybe can help me too.
Or Mary.
Okay, thank you.
All right, excellent. Is there any other new business? Going once, going twice.
I'll make mine really quick. I did three, and they're really, really quick. A shout-out to my fellow gardeners at the community garden. I had reached out to Deb Rolfe, who kind of oversees us, and any extra vegetables that we have will be donating to the food pantry. Woo, woo! So thank you for doing that. So all the volunteer notices, you know, I've put them out on Facebook, Mary's put them out on the Town of Berlin, I've dropped off papers at the general store. What do you feel about maybe putting something up? I'll come up with something clever for the Berlin Lions sign, just to get word out that people, that there's volunteer opportunities out there. All right, Margaret shaking her head, so I'm going to say yes, I'm going to run with that. And then another one that had got sent my way, resident in town sent me an article that students got, received credits for assisting the elderly, you know, either raking, weeding, doing something around that. Is that something that, again, I can drive it, that's fine, I don't care, that we can possibly look at maybe doing with Tohonto and/or Assabette? I mean, I know it's not going to be a quick--
I think Holly was actually--
Doing something?
Doing something surrounding that, so you would probably want to talk to her before you--
Okay.
--because she was working with organizations to get kids to help.
All right, I'll reach out to Holly, I'll reach out to the Boy Scouts. Mary, do you know if there's any like 4-H interest in it? I mean, I want to cast like a wide net.
There's no 4-H locally.
Meh. Okay. And maybe the Girl Scouts, I know there are not many, but--
We could say you could go from goats to landscaping.
Maybe.
All right.
I'll see if they'd be interested in community service.
Okay, yeah, because I know that--
You have Boys and Girl Scouts, so.
Correct, yeah, I'll reach out to them. I know that the Young Marines do that. They did it for my dad, but they only do it if you're a veteran, so I'm sure that there are some elderly folks in towns who are veterans that I can reach out to, Young Marines, and they can help out with that, but for those adults in town that aren't, I don't want to leave them out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, I'll run with it.
Okay.
And thank you to Dave Smith for continually changing the trash sign this week. It's leave your trash in your car. Trying to do the Massachusetts accent, which was really bad. Okay, I'm done. One, two, three.
All right. Old business, is it, was that old business too?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We do have need for an executive session. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire EMS chief, and to review draft executive session minutes pursuant to the open meeting law. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second, are we coming back?
And executive session minutes.
I did, I said that.
You'll be coming back just--
Only to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got--
Saki, aye.
Keefe, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. B.